You didn't like to welcome everybody this evening? Ms. Markley, would you lead us with the pledge, please?
We do defy at the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, everybody is present. Mr. Holden is with us on the phone right now. Public attendance?
We have that. On the sign and sheet, so we're good.
Okay. Agenda adjustments?
There are none.
Personnel, student achievements, recognitions?
None this evening.
Student discipline?
None.
Academics?
None.
Delegations?
None.
Moving on, consider an approved proposal for school bus purchase.
I make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
You were provided three proposals for three different buses. There were Bluebird buses, the proposal that you have are for gasoline. Those can be diesel, but according to the mechanics, we'll add about $6,000 per bus to change those to diesel. You were provided one from Metheny Motors for the Thomas bus, and then you were provided one from, I believe Worldwide for Internationals.
And them was a diesel?
Yes.
Okay.
The last two were?
The last two were, the Bluebirds can be. In my conversation with our mechanics, they are leaning more toward looking at the Internationals at this point.
Proposing three?
That's proposal three.
Is Mrs. Richards there?
She is.
Mrs. Richards, what was the cost on that bus?
It's in your proposal. Hold on a second. The Internationals were a little more expensive than the Thomas buses, but they felt like they would, they would hold up better based on their experience. The price per bus for the Internationals was 163, 221.
Well, 156, 428 on the Thomas.
Yes.
And that's, and that's, and that's, and that's a diesel, correct?
Internet, these are the Internationals. That's what the, the mechanics had asked for. Yes, those are diesel, but the Thomas are also diesel, and the Bluebirds can be diesel. So the, all three of them are diesel options.
So Worldwide's got the cheapest diesel?
No, they do not. Worldwide has the middle. Thomas is the cheapest.
So how many buses are we proposing to buy here?
I think we're looking at buying two, right, Mariah?
Buying two. And, and that's customary every, we do that every single year.
So that we're in rotation to replace those, yes.
Is that what everybody does, other counties do too?
They do them in rotation because once they hit so many miles at a certain age, then they're not allowed to run any longer.
So basically, we have to spend the money to buy these two buses, one way or the other.
And this is all money that we're getting through reimbursements for what we're turning in. So this is not, Mariah, you can probably speak to that better than I can, but this is not money straight out of the county coffers. This is money that we have gotten through reimbursements from transportation.
So the Bluebirds are 152 at gas. You had, you had to change that to diesel, you added 6,000 on that.
Now who was that speaking there?
That was Mr. White.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I could hear it.
Now, Bluebird's the one that also owes us some buses.
Bluebird, we just received the two gasoline buses.
They did show up, okay.
Yes, they, they came the end of May, I believe it was the end of May, they came.
Okay.
But yes, we finally got those, but it was a year later.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So that put us out of rotation a little bit, or what?
We just drive the older buses.
Yeah, we just continue to drive the older buses until we get the new ones.
So Thomas?
They for Worldwide said we can get a bus.
If I remember correctly, most of them are, are estimating about 12 months. Some of them are down to 10 months, but they're saying 12 to be safe.
No. Repeat that for me, that's how long it takes us to get, to get the buses?
Yes.
So, did the Bluebirds go double that, or did we just not expect it to be that long?
We did not expect it to be that long. They didn't tell us it was going to take that long. Yeah.
So it took?
It took longer than we anticipated it taking with them.
And it's going to take that long?
That's what they're quoting us right now.
And the, the buses from International, are they, they freight liners? Or I mean, is that Worldwide?
Worldwide, it, I mean, they're international, that's all it says.
They're international buses, okay.
What's, what's the negative downfall of the Thomas buses?
According to the mechanics, the last few Thomas buses that we've gotten, they've had to go over and actually tighten bolts and fix things before they can go on the road. They're also telling me that they don't last as long as the Tom, uh, the Internationals.
Hard to be an international, so as I drove along, them, them Thomas buses just can't carry.
Do we have some kind of responsibility to take the lowest bid, or not? So in, in this sense, if we can do whatever we want to do?
Yep. Yep.
We had to take, we had to get proposals though, or something?
Yes, because of the amount of money, we had to get three proposals.
We had to get through proposals, but we're not under an obligation to take the lowest bid.
No.
It's not coming out of the county coffers, so to speak.
Right.
Right? And our mechanics feel as if that the Thomas buses are, correct myself, the International buses are the best fit for what we have, right?
They do.
My suggestion would be the International buses.
Yep.
We need to make a motion. I make a motion, we purchase two International buses.
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
And that's from Worldwide.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed nay, motion carries.
And them, them was diesel, my lack, correct?
Yes.
Okay. For the diesel.
Consider and approve a contract between Lewis County Board of Education and Felicia Corley to supervise the school psychologist, student intern, and psychoeducational testing services as needed for the 2025-2026 school year. The motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider and approve a memorandum of understanding between Marion County Board of Education and Lewis County Board of Education to contract with Medicaid Auditor and, and provide Medicaid eligible billing services and Medicaid monitoring to qualifying students beginning on July 1, 2025, and ends on June 30, 2026. The motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? What, I looked at it, but Mariah, what are we doing here exactly? Or maybe, what, do you have a question?
So we contract with Marion County Schools, and they provide us a person who does all of our auditing for Medicaid billing. So we have folks who bill Medicaid for services that we provide for students. She does the auditing.
I understand perfectly. We talked about that. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider and approve memorandum of understanding between Westwood University Board of Governors on behalf of Westwood University and the School of Department of Ophthalmology and Visual Sciences, Visual Sciences, and Lewis County Board of Education, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. The motion for approval? So move.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider and approve contract between the Lewis County Board of Education and Best Life Therapy LLC for the 2025-2026 school year. The motion for approval? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. On the policies, do I have a motion to approve the policies on the second reading, first reading, as provided in the board book? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Approved minutes from, minutes from previous board meeting, June 20, June 23, 2025. The motion for approval? So move. I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consent agenda, out of state meeting requests. Carrie Lambert and Ashley Robinson, SREB, Making Schools Work Conference in New Orleans. New Orleans, Louisiana, July 15, 2025 through July 18, 2025. The motion for approval? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir. Now, this is, we, we've already approved several people to go to this, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there's just a couple more that are proven, and this coming up soon?
Yes.
And, and again, I think Mr. Holden asked the question, the money's not actually coming out of?
It's coming out of our professional development funds.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve personnel agenda as provided?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
I've got a question with personnel. How, how are we advertising for this jobs? I saw where Mr. Brand put it on Facebook. I think he got three hits off of it, maybe three eligible candidates. Are we doing this with other schools on Facebook, or how are we getting these jobs out there? I'm asking, how are we advertising these jobs? I understand that, but. And that's okay. Yeah. Because we got 16 professional jobs. What I'm worried about is we're one month out from school, and the first day of school is you got coverage for this class. That's a big concern. So what are we doing to move forward to get these jobs and get these jobs filled? What else could we do? I think one thing, like Mr. Brand does, each school has a Facebook page. Sounds like he got some nice candidates right off the bat. Three doesn't sound like the three of many, but that's one more science we have at school who are looking for. We have got to do something different to attain people. You have private schools, you have charter schools, you have homeschooling. There is competition everywhere. We have a duty to fill these classrooms and teach our kids. And at this point, you look at our date, our data, we've got a lot of work to do in everything as a new school year comes upon us. And this isn't what everybody wants to hear, but I think it's the truth. Until we address these problems, we're not going anywhere. We have to do better. Going forward, I would think you would do a significant amount of advertising more, a job fair, anything, a Facebook post, social media is where it's at. It's not on a county email, on a county board online. So as we go forward, I think we have to do our due diligence to try to find these people.
Relative to that, you know, outside of, of what Ms. Mace was talking about there, I know we had chatted about putting something out to Intermountain and Rucker Delta for those, those schools that may have been under state control or what have you, or closing perhaps. Did we do any good on that? Was there any value in, in putting those advertisements out?
So I think we got a couple of people from other counties, but the one we had from Randolph County ended up not coming. And I think we had another one that ended up going back as well.
But you know what, it was, I think it was worth trying.
Now, who put out the, uh, things on Facebook? I just caught the tail end of that.
Mr. Brand at Peterson.
Peterson, okay. Is that something he's allowed to do, or see in his job description, or?
Sure, he can advertise for positions at his school.
Okay. I didn't know if they could, if they could come in. I mean, we're gonna do something. I mean, I, I agree with that way on that, but till we solve the money and job security and, and, uh, uh, insurance, I, I, then I'd, I'd say we could fill some of these positions, but of course then how are we gonna do that? So that's an million dollar question.
Let me ask you a couple stupid questions, because sometimes I'm not, don't follow things quite like I should. So tonight on this personnel agenda, we're approving the postings that are, that are here with the, with the blank lines, right? We're approving those to be posted, is that how it works? Or are those the ones that are already posted?
Those are already posted.
They are already posted. When do we approve postings?
So there's one on your personnel agenda tonight that is asking permission to post?
Where's that one?
Uh, I think it's the second section.
Two A. I just wanted, so, so. My question is on timing. So when you talk about personnel season, what constitutes that? What months, Dr. Stewart? I mean, is it?
So personnel season?
March, April?
Is typically in the early spring.
Okay.
And that's when we're doing riffs and transfers. That's what refers to personnel season.
Okay, then, then when we go into trying to fill these positions that Mr. White's talking about, when does that typically happen? Now over the summer, clear up until school starts? It, it's?
Every time we have a destination or retirement, we post that job to fill it, and it will stay posted.
Right.
Personnel season is just the spring required to use or my work is not paid one. That's what's called personnel season.
Yeah.
But as far as filling positions, that doesn't have a season.
That, so, but, well, well, so, so let's, let's make a season hiring season. That's right now before school starts, right?
It's all the time.
Okay, so it could be?
It could be October at sea, February.
Okay.
We post positions to hire here, right?
So, how many positions do we think will be down when we, when we start on August 14th? Where we're, where we're gonna, and maybe, maybe you have to come back with an answer later, but how many positions are we going to have? Long-term subs or column subs? I, I, I mean, I think that's the, that's a big question. I mean, I, I don't know if I can tell it from this by the blanks, if that's what we're going to have or not.
So I think our biggest issue right now is special education and filling those positions, and I know that some of our principals and our special ed director have already been working with some contracted services so that we can have some folks certified in those positions ready to go. So they won't necessarily be our employee, but they'll be certified and we'll be contracting with a company to put them in there. So I know they're trying to be creative in some other ways to, to fill those positions.
Because I, I definitely see some new, I'm sorry.
Because I just want to follow up on what Dr. Stewart said. So even though we're contracting with special education for services, we still have to continue to post those positions in hopes that we can afford by that commitment to become a teacher.
So they'll stay on my list every two weeks for the board meeting until, even though we have somebody, even though we have somebody that's, that's qualified doing it.
Right.
And, and, and like, like the issues that we ran across last year were issues beyond anybody's control, because we had to, we had to let some, let some folks go, and then, and then we never had the, the ability to fill the job except with the, with the sub or a long-term sub. And some kids missed out on pretty important, pretty important classes. So, you know, it's important to me going forward that those kids, that we have some sort of plan to, to maybe get them, to get them caught up. Not, not saying anything about the long-term sub, but, you know, it's just different when it's not somebody that specializes in that. Mr. Bush was in social studies, psychology, you, you know, specialized in it. And, and that was all I was thinking, I'm sorry.
Now, does this money come out of, of, of the federal money for this contraction for, for these special ed? That doesn't, we can get our money back, or is it not, or how does this work?
No, we would pay them just like we would pay a teacher, so it comes out of our county money, or out of federal funds if that's how the position is funded.
Okay.
Is it typically more priced for, priced for a teacher?
So there is a chance that it could get federally reimbursed?
No, we don't get reimbursed for them. We would utilize like special education federal funds to pay the salary for that person.
Yeah, that, well, that's what I meant. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would come out of the federal, okay.
Mr. Guss, would it be proper, I, I have a few questions that I, I'm not sure that I can ask under, under two, under the, the, the requests. You know, want to, want to follow up on, on somebody that we're, we're rehiring that we didn't at first, and there's a couple other questions I'd like to ask under that too. Would it be proper to go to the executive session to do that, or am I too late?
Under Robert Rule's orders, I think we could, couldn't we? Certainly.
I would make that motion.
Okay. We have a second?
What is your motion?
To go in executive session?
Okay.
Mike, I said I had a couple questions.
In regards to personnel.
Under number two, regards to, regards to personnel, under, under a couple of requests. And I just don't feel comfortable asking those questions in, in a public setting. And probably shouldn't. I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those opposed nay, motion carries. Let the record reflect, the time is now 6:23.
So my understanding is that mowing and snow removal is currently in the contract that is for our custodial maintenance staff. And so to hire that out would be redundant because we're already paying them to do that. When it comes time for getting ready for football season and those kinds of things, we can certainly look at offering some overtime or extra shifts for people who want to want to help work out. But I think it would be a waste of money at this point to hire an entire company to take on mowing when we're already paying people to do that.
If I could add, Mr. Holden has a makes a very, very valid point. And I tell you, I was I was up there just to walk around and you're welcome, but you have your work cut out for us. The thing that concerns me a little bit about that is we're playing on a grass field. And I tell you what, we had folks in the past that really took care of that grass field. Folks know it better than better than I do. I'm worried what it's going to look like by October 31st or November 5th or whatever date the last last game is. Because I don't know that it's getting taken care of, Dr. Stewart, as well as it as well as it did in the past. I mean, you can go up there with your eyes and pretty much take a take a look at it. So that's a that's a little worry to have.
I had a crew of four guys that went around to each of the each of the schools and done weed eating and brush off. And I mean, they that was 10 hours a day, hard as they could go. And and I don't know how many we've got up here now. I mean, we just have one up here now. Is that Allen Field? Is that right?
I believe so, but I'd have to double check.
Okay. What I'm saying is, I mean, like I said, that they was that one person plus my four guys when I was a bus driver. And that that and then that was that was getting after it. I mean, but that was I was really shaving the whole place. Then we go to Peterson, then we go to Jane Lou, and behind the cafeteria and shave all that. I mean, there's there's a lot of a lot of mowing. And I know, I don't know, and this is something for Mr. Tyler there, the new man. Down at Taylor School, there's trees that have fell down there and getting ready to fall on some of that property down there. And as soon as he gets a chance, he could get down and look at it and straight up going on the hill where they'll turn around the playground is up there.
Speaking of crews, were we ever able to assemble a painting crew for this summer?
We did not. No, that's on the list for next year.
I'm gonna repeat that again because I want to make sure since Mr. Holden brought it up. Taking care of a football field is like taking care of a golf course. And you've got to think about kids' safety at both at both fields. So I'm not opposed to having, what do you call it, an agronomist or something like that? Or somebody that knows something to at least make sure those fields are safe. I mean, you can't have holes in them, right, if you run them? I mean, so and and too, we've been fortunate over the years that we've had people that that really the guy up to high school took care of it. I mean, he really took pride in it. So we want to make sure that that's happening because what I saw it was when I took a peek.
Does the sprinkler system work?
I assume it does.
I don't have the answer to that.
That's a lot of it in this kind of weather in the summer. I mean, it's if you've got water, you can maintain it. It's a lot of work. It's an everyday it's an everyday job. If you want to do it right, you live there.
That's right.
Back when I was driving a bus, I mean, we had a weed eating crew. We had three or four people that we bitted out for the year for the weed eating. We had a floor cleaning crew, we had a paint crew. You know, just just during the summer, there was three or four on each crew. And it seemed like, you know, that that worked out good.
Anybody think having further? Not too much to do, right? So it's all pretty manageable. Right, thank you, sir. Superintendent updates?
I don't have much. We just met a week ago, so summer school finishes up this week. Energy Express will continue through July 25th. We have many of our employees taking taking advantage of summer learning opportunities, including many of our service personnel. And the Legislative Auditor's Office has requested some specific information from every county board. And so we are preparing that information to be submitted.
Thank you. Mr. Holden, please.
Well, I got I want to welcome the new man aboard, Tyler there. You've got quite a job ahead of you. It sounds like you're already hit the ground running, so want to wish you the best of luck. I also like to say, you know, I don't know if this thing of of the new bill, the past, the work people can get not taxed on overtime. If that maybe help help some people want to work some overtime. I don't know if that would, you know, help things or what. But I mean, I think we'll look at it at all angles. So and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Tyler, welcome aboard. We appreciate you coming to us. And any way we can help you, let us know. There's a lot of work ahead, but a lot of progress can be made with that, and too, we appreciate your help. Glad you're here.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Bush?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Bailey?
I'll just I'll be brief, but I do have a couple of things, and I do want to welcome you. And I want first off, thank Dr. Stewart because she provided us a list of the projects that we have going on, the major ones. And I'm sure you'll you'll know all about them real soon. And it's a tough job. I mean, our facilities are old. There's, you know, a lot of work to do, and sometimes there's there's things you can't do. But but, you know, people, as long as you communicate with them and you talk to them, I mean, you're going to make them happy out there. We saw evidence of that before. I do want to talk about one more thing, though. And this is my I've been on the board a year now, July 1st. This is my first meeting after being on the board a year. So time flies, don't blink. But but back a year ago, and even longer than a year ago, when Mr. White and I were out talking to to folks in the community, trying to trying to get elected to the board, and talking to teachers and others, one of the biggest issues we had out there was the need for disruptive students to maybe be in a different setting, out of the classroom. So so today, I printed out the in-ord version of Senate Bill 199, which went into effect July 2nd. And and I'm going to read just a just a quick little passage because we were really ahead of the game if if we got there. Just a quick little passage. "The legislature finds that isolating students or placing them in ALCs, or licensed behavioral health agencies, may be the best setting for chronically disruptive students. The county board," key word coming up, "the county board," that's us, "shall create more alternative learning centers, expand its capacity for alternative placements, or partner with a licensed behavioral health agency, of course, subject to funding, to correct these students' behavior so they can return into a regular classroom without engaging in further disruptive behavior." Now, I could go on about it. But but we're over a year, and we heard January 1st we were going to have something. Now, I know it's been posted, and I know it's a tough job to fill. But at this point, the rubber's meeting the road. And and our teachers and the folks in the school system, our aides, they've asked for this help. And it's time we give it to them in one way or the other. We have to figure it out. That's why we're here. That's why we're here. So the rubber's meeting the road, the legislature's put the word "shall" in there. So so we have to come up with some viable solution to to help the folks that are taking care of our kids do their jobs better. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I I have one thing, and you may very well, I think you're already aware of it. The summer feeding program, the five-day meal boxes. I realize that that is it's not foolproof. There's going to be accidents that happen, there's going to be milks spillage or not going to be filled up. But I don't know how how many years have we had this particular venture?
Several.
Would it be possible maybe next year with a nutrition director's helper, whoever, to see if there's other options out there throughout the state where maybe there's a little better satisfaction rate? If it would be up to, you know, obviously McCall Lake, but I think that's something we should explore. Outside of that, that's that's all I have. The next date of our board meeting will be July 28th at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Make a motion.
In discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Everybody have a good evening.